Gotcha, okay. All right, well, let's go ahead and get started and I see that we have Chaplain Taylor on the line with us. Chaplain, how are you today?
I'm fine, y'all today?
Good, we're well and it's always good to hear from you, it's even better to see you though. So I still hate these Zoom things, but we're glad that you're here with us and I hope you're doing well.
Yes, sir.
So if you'll go ahead and do our invocation for us, then after that we'll stand and do the pledge, okay?
Okay. Lord, thank you for this day, we thank for the county commissioners, Lord. Pray you bless them today, give them the knowledge they need, Lord, as this meeting today. Thank for the work they do, Lord. I pray blessings upon them in our county, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Chaplain.
Yes, sir.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Jim Motion Judy Second, thank you. And I do, so I, the consent agenda, motion to approve the consent agenda. All right, thank you. Judy and Jim Motion in a second, all in favor say aye. And then we'll go ahead and move into our presentation from Hazen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Caskey just texted and he's gonna try to join by phone.
Oh, excellent, good. All right, Aaron, anything you want to say before Aaron Babson jumps on here? Or do you just want to go straight to Aaron Babson?
Just I thank the commissioners for your willingness to have this meeting today and thank you. And Roger for.
Yeah, Roger too, I'm sorry, Roger, welcome, Aaron Babson, welcome. These are, these are really smart guys, these are guys I didn't, I wasn't smart enough to hang around with.
I'll put Roger in that category, I just kind of tag along sometimes, you know?
I don't believe that, these guys have really been wonderful to work with and pleasant as well. And so thank you for your help with Rowan County and so we'll just turn the floor over to you.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll let, as Roger shares his screen, I think he's gonna try to give the presentation here.
I just want to second what Aaron said, thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with Rowan County. It's been a great experience, we're moving right on with the project and so today's goals will be to give you an update on the three tasks that were approved back in September. Roger will go through those tasks and we'll do it in a little bit more detail. We're here for questions afterwards if needed and I'm gonna turn it over to Roger. He's, he is our lead and copper expert out of Richmond and of course I'm Aaron Babson with Hazen and Sawyer, but we're both with Hazen and Sawyer, I'm in our Greensboro office and Roger's our Richmond, Virginia office. Roger is our lead and copper expert for the company and so you're in good hands, he has quite a bit of experience working on projects such as this and as well as Hazen and Sawyer does as a whole nationwide, so. But I will, I will turn this over to him, let him go through it and then as we have questions, you know, I'll back through.
Okay, thank you, Aaron, can everyone see the screen okay and hear my audio just fine?
Yeah, are those glamour shots?
I don't know if I would call it glamour. But yeah, we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today and to assist Rowan County with this effort. So today this will be an informative presentation to provide an update on the project as well as some next steps that we have discussed with the county and would request your feedback on. So the Northeast Rowan County Water System serves 162 active metered connections and a population in that area of around 450 people. In 2018, as a result of concerns about industrial contamination from coal ash, there was a transition from private groundwater wells in this area for water supply to a public water supply. And the water supply was extended from Salisbury Rowan Utilities to serve this community. Water is treated by Salisbury Rowan Utilities and enters through a meter on Long Ferry Road that enters the Northeast Rowan County system. A little bit more information here on this system. SRU is the operator in responsible charge, that means they're responsible for operation and maintenance of the system. SRU is responsible for compliance with regulations and rules for water system operation. They also assist with customer billing and bill collection. And for these services to operate the water system, Rowan County pays SRU at a monthly rate. So we'll be talking today about lead and copper rule compliance. And the lead and copper rule is a federal regulation created by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for public water systems across the country. This rule was created in the early 1990s and actually this year is entering a significant update, which is interesting timing with this project, but there is a significant change to this rule that's in progress. For lead and copper rule compliance for this, for the Northeast Rowan County Water System, the lead and copper rule requires 10 homes to be sampled on a regular basis. And those homes are selected based on the construction date of the home, the age of the home and the plumbing materials that are present in that home to focus on homes that may contain sources of lead, including lead solder, which we'll talk a little bit more about today. So when the transition from private groundwater wells to public water supply occurred for the Northeast Rowan County system, the lead and copper rule became effective for the first time. Of course, there was no lead and copper compliance monitoring prior to that date. And so lead and copper monitoring began shortly after the system came online. And in the subsequent rounds of monitoring that had followed, there's evidence that lead in four homes has exceeded the action level of 15 parts per billion. Let's take a moment to talk about the action level. This is not a health-based number, there is no safe level of lead in drinking water. And so this action level is what the industry and the EPA has deemed to be a reasonable measure and benchmark of effective corrosion control treatment. Basically, that water quality is doing what it should be to reasonably minimize the potential for lead release into water. So this is the standard that utilities across the country use to identify effective treatment strategies to maintain compliance with this rule. The source of lead in this system is privately owned plumbing materials within the home or within the building. And there's been some work to evaluate that as part of this project. It is important to keep in mind that water treated and supplied to the Northeast Rowan County System does not contain lead. This only occurs if water sits in contact with leaded plumbing materials within private buildings. The lead and copper rule requires optimal corrosion control treatments is the term used. And that is a treatment strategy to minimize the potential for the release of lead in situations where there may be lead plumbing materials. And for this project, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality has designated certain water quality parameters that they feel would minimize the release of lead and copper into the system. This graphic shows a typical diagram of a home plumbing system and lead and copper are released into the water through corrosion of these internal building plumbing materials depending on the type of building and the age of the home, there could be different sources of lead. In drinking water, that includes lead solder that was used to connect copper pipes in a plumbing system up until about 1986, as well as leaded brass fixtures, which could contain significant amounts of lead all the way up until 2014. So as a result of this, there are commonly sources of lead in home and building plumbing materials. So again, water distributed in the water distribution mains contains no lead. This only occurs in some cases when water sits within the private plumbing. This graph shows some of the historical lead levels observed within the Northeast Rowan County System. Since the system came online in 2018, there's been now five rounds of monitoring required by the lead and copper rule. And the 90th percentile has exceeded the action level in each of these cases. The 90th percentile happens to be the measure used for compliance purposes with the lead and copper rule. And this means that the number that you're seeing here means that 90% of the samples collected in each of those rounds were less than the number shown. And in fact, many, the majority of samples collected to date have had very low levels of lead in most cases below the detection level. There have been four homes where elevated lead levels above this action level have been detected. So this is updated with the most recent sampling results through the end of 2020, which was the last compliance monitoring period. And this shows that there are, there continue to be some localized high lead levels within the system resulting in a 90th percentile value above the EPA's action level.
Hey Roger?
Yes?
In each of those, one, two, three, five, five testing times, were these all the same houses each time or were these separate, were these different houses?
Generally speaking, the same houses were used. There were some minor changes based on customer participation. This program requires the customers to be willing to receive a sample kit, collect the sample and return it to the utility. So there were minor changes throughout this time period with a goal to keep as many of the same customers as possible. So I think it was a combination of the two, primarily the same with only a few changes over this time period. And we'd be glad to provide more details on that for you as a follow-up, that would be helpful.
How many houses are we talking about in the test?
During each round of compliance monitoring that you see here, the EPA requires a minimum of 10 samples to be collected for compliance purposes. During the summer of 2020, the county also conducted a voluntary sampling program intended to collect more information for guiding the study and for informing customers about potential lead risks. And an additional seven customers participated. And one of those numbers exceeded the action level. So in total, there's been 18 samples, 18 different homes sampled throughout this time period.
This bar graph is based on how many houses, 10 or 17?
This bar graph is based on 10 homes per monitoring period as required by the rule.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So we'll be talking in the remaining slides about the scope of work for this project that consists of three different task orders. Task order one is a chemical booster pump station design. The scope includes services for design bidding and construction administration to construct a chemical booster station where water enters the Northeast Rowan County Water System. Task order two is a study with corrosion control testing being performed by Virginia Tech. We'll talk more about the approach for the sampling. The goal of this is to understand if alternate treatment conditions such as a chemical booster station or other measures could optimize lead corrosion and decrease lead levels in drinking water. And lastly, task order three is a lead and copper rule compliance support. This includes regulatory coordination with the state, assistance with ongoing sampling programs and site assessments being performed by the county SRU and analysis of distribution system water quality data that's being routinely collected. So first we'll talk about the pump station design, the chemical booster station. The origin of this goes back to North Carolina DEQ's treatment designation for optimal corrosion control treatments in this system. They directed the county to provide a water quality entering the system with a pH and orthophosphate levels within these ranges. And one option of how to achieve that would be to construct a chemical booster station in order to make adjustments to the water quality and specifically the pH and the orthophosphate levels. So the goal here is to develop a design for a pump station to meet these requirements by the state that can be constructed and implemented in order to make these water quality adjustments locally within the Northeast Rowan County System. So this diagram of the system shows the approximate location of the chemical booster station. You see here in blue the distribution system mains for SRU and the booster station would be located nearby the point at which water enters the Northeast Rowan County System and would treat water going to only that portion of the system. This shows a rendering of our draft design for the chemical booster station. This would consist of a small building, likely a precast building for cost and schedule efficiency. And inside, there would be a series of small chemical tanks and chemical pumps in order to treat the water at this location to meet the state's treatment designation. So this shows a little bit more detail on the contents of that chemical booster station.
Would that chemical station require an employee to be there full-time? Or could SRU handle whatever needs to be done there?
There have been some discussions with the project team about staffing and there are regulations for minimum staffing requirements of this type of facility. I would need to double check on those requirements and get back with you on the specifics about operator staffing requirements. This diagram shows a site plan for the chemical booster station. This would be located at a site where there is an existing elevated water tank made for a suitable location for this pump station adjacent to other water system facilities. There would need to be a water supply routed from the water main on Long Ferry Road to the chemical booster station with a return of treated water back to the system. So this slide summarizes the status of the design. We have submitted a cost estimate at the 50% draft design level indicating that the project is expected to total approximately $630,000. This is still a draft design and we'll continue to monitor any changes to this construction cost total. The design has been submitted to the state and the county received authorization to construct from public water supply. And in February of this year, we expect to submit the design for a Rowan County building permit approval and proceed, pending the results of other studies, proceed to advertisement of the project for construction bids. Ultimately, the pump station effectiveness and its need will be determined by the results of the study I mentioned at Virginia Tech. And this will guide exactly how this would best, the station would best be implemented. So next we'll talk about task order two, which is the corrosion control study at Virginia Tech. So overall, there are several ongoing steps to evaluate corrosion control and identify potential strategies to reduce lead release in the system. This includes water quality analysis of data that's collected routinely by SRU, investigative tap sampling that's being performed by the county and SRU staff to collect more information on sources of lead in individual homes, as well as sample site assessments to identify plumbing materials which could contain lead. Lastly, we'll talk here about the corrosion control testing being done by Virginia Tech. So the type of testing being done at Virginia Tech is known as bench scale testing. They're using actual representative samples of copper pipe with lead solder as well as leaded brass in order to evaluate the release of lead into treated water samples. So samples of treated surface water from SRU as well as groundwater collected from a private well in the Rowan County System have been shipped to Virginia Tech in order to do the sampling, to make sure that the water quality conditions match those experienced on sites within the county. And by exposing these metal samples to different water sources and water treated with different treatment strategies, the goal is to identify optimal treatment approaches that could reduce lead release further. This is important and a really beneficial strategy to do this testing prior to making any treatment changes and especially prior to constructing a chemical booster pump station to ensure that the intended approach for treatments will have the outcome that we hope for to reduce lead levels. So this will help to determine the best treatment approach and provide more confidence that it will be effective when implemented full-scale. And lastly, we'll talk about task order three with lead and copper compliance and we'll provide an update on potential compliance strategies for Rowan County. This slide summarizes four potential compliance strategies that are being evaluated. The state's water quality designation that we discussed earlier must be met by June 12th of this year. So first, one strategy is construction of a chemical booster station at the point of entry into the system. This would allow Rowan County to adjust both the pH and orthophosphate levels in accordance with the state's treatment designation. Another strategy being evaluated is system-wide treatment adjustments at the Salisbury Water Treatment Plant. This would treat, make changes to water quality entering Salisbury, entering the Northeast Rowan County System, possibly without necessitating the construction of a chemical feed station. Third, there is another compliance strategy for installation of plasticated point-of-use filters certified for lead removal. This is actually a new compliance strategy that has not always been accepted in the past, but at the federal level, there is a rule currently being finalized to allow this as a compliance strategy. In order to do this, the county would need to ensure the installation of certified filters at each home in the system regardless of any prior lead levels and then take some responsibility for monitoring and maintenance of those filters in the future. And this could be performed as an alternative to any treatment changes to provide reduction in lead levels within each home. Lastly, we're also considering a replacement of lead and copper plumbing and fixtures which could potentially contain lead. This is not historically an approved regulatory measure, but it will remove lead sources in the system and could be part of a holistic approach to achieve compliance and protect public health. Lastly, we'll talk about some of the tasks completed to date. The county has taken a series of important actions to notify customers in this area about the detection of elevated lead levels in certain homes and also help them to reduce the potential for lead exposure in those areas. Public education materials and notifications have been distributed to residents. As I mentioned, over the summer, the county embarked on a voluntary lead and copper sampling program that was offered at no cost to customers in this area. Seven households participated and one of those results exceeded the action level. In the past, certified point-of-use pitcher filters have been provided to customers with a lead detection above the action level. And today, the county is considering a contract to distribute certified filters to all residents in the distribution system to provide more uniform public health protection. The county also held virtual community meetings which were not well-attended. And the goal of current efforts is to collect more data and increase community engagement to get more sample data back from a larger set of homes in the area. Rowan County is working with Hazen and Sawyer as well as Virginia Tech on the corrosion control study. And Virginia Tech's study is ongoing to determine the most appropriate corrosion control treatment strategy. The booster pump station design is nearing completion so that this will be ready to move towards the construction phase if necessary. And distribution system water quality monitoring continues to ensure that consistent favorable water quality is supplied to the Northeast Rowan County System. The county is considering the distribution of certified point-of-use filters to all customers in this area. And Rowan County is in discussions with a specialized firm to assist with that process. And this would be an advantageous strategy to efficiently distribute a large number of filters and these replacement cartridges shown here to customers throughout the system. This would be provided free of charge to the customer and to ensure uniform public health protection would be provided to all customers regardless of prior sample results. As part of this effort, customers will also receive a lead and copper sampling kit requesting a sample of the water in the home. That is after the water has sat in contact with their plumbing for some time to determine what the lead levels are and if there may be sources of lead in their system. By increasing the number of samples of homes that have sampled lead and copper, this would greatly enhance our efforts to obtain compliance and reduce lead levels and inform the county about the best path forward to address this issue. Lastly, the county is considering an incentive for customers who participate in this sampling program. In our experience in other systems, providing an incentive to customers for special samples such as this can greatly augment participation. Based on discussions with the county manager, he recommends a one-month water use credit not to exceed $72 for participation in the sampling program. And this is intended to maximize participation and increase the number of voluntary samples returned since the participation last summer was not as high as we'd like. So next steps to complete the study and move towards compliance with the lead and copper rule. The study at Virginia Tech is ongoing to determine the most effective treatment measures. And this, the results of this will provide some important guidelines for next steps. Voluntary sampling, to distribute sample kits to all customers and obtain as many of those as possible would be very beneficial for evaluating the different strategies that we discussed and determining the best path forward. If there's treatment changes to be made either locally at the Rowan County System or system-wide with SRU, this will require some regulatory coordination and approval prior to implementation. And that would allow Rowan County to implement the chosen alternative to best protect the citizens of Rowan County. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Green, you asked about monitoring of that pump station. Ultimately, that will fall under the ORC for the system. But as we understand the regulations, it would require a minimum daily visit from an operator there at SRU. It stays a solitary system with its own ID. Expect you'd need a minimum of a great C operator. But ultimately, like I said, that will fall under the requirements of the ORC.
You have presented a lot of information here today to the customers especially, whose water we think, we think has lead in some of them. And the questions that we have, we can't, you know, we can't know what the answers are until we get back information from other folks working on this. But it seems to me the most important thing today is to encourage all 162 folks to help us get samples of their water so that we can know where we're going and how many folks we're having to affect with this. And so my questions are going to be limited because I think the most important thing today is to let the public know we are trying to eliminate all lead. And the information that we have today is. And the information that we have today is that the lead is coming from inside your house. And we need to be able to test that so that we know the size of the problem that we have.
Roger and Aaron, we have a question from someone from Wendy Everhart that is is watching us today. She says, I'm a homeowner in the area. Am I understanding this correctly? That this is only occurring in those homes where water sits in lead material within those homes? Is the concern that water from those homes is leading to lead levels to neighboring homes who may not have lead materials? And Roger, maybe you could take that and just kind of begin go over, we've got water coming from SRU that is lead free and going through brand, I don't know what the I don't know what the water main pipes that have just been installed or made out of. But they're going through that and then entering the homes and that's where the leads being picked up. Could you answer her question, Wendy's question about that?
Absolutely. Yes, thank you for the question and be glad to talk about that. As 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 we discussed, yeah, water coming from SRU is is treated and contains, does not contain lead. Water moving through the distribution system up to private residences also does not contain lead. Especially considering the very recent construction of the water system just prior to 2018. There's there's no lead sources there. If this issue is is localized to within individual buildings. And that can make it a challenge for utilities to to address because lead levels are certainly not uniform. They vary from house to house depending on many, many different factors. Happening on any given day. So the single biggest factor and the most important is determining if there could be any sources of lead present in the plumbing system for homes that were constructed prior to around 1986 and from our review, many, many of the homes within the northeast Rowan County system would fall into that category. There could be several different sources of lead, including lead solder used to join copper pipes, including brass fixtures or valves which may be in the plumbing system and may or may not contain lead and other things potentially. So it can be challenging to determine if those sources of lead are there. Participating in this voluntary sampling program, we we fully agree is an excellent idea. Not only helps the county determine the best solution and path forward. But it helps customers understand if their home plumbing could contain lead and if there could be any risk of of lead in water as a result. I think it's also important for customers to keep in mind, if if there are sources of lead in your home plumbing, there are some simple steps that you can take to minimize health risks associated with that. Such as flushing the water for at least three minutes prior to use. Once that water has passed through the plumbing system, that greatly reduces the potential for lead exposure. And many of the communications coming from Rowan County have explained some of those steps that homeowners can take. If you're not sure if there may be lead plumbing in lead sources in your plumbing. Then there can be some simple steps you can take to minimize risks.
Hey Roger, could you, could you answer her question? Is is a concern that water from those homes is leading to lead levels in neighboring homes? Who may not have lead materials? Would you answer that question?
Sure. So if if there's lead in 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 one home, that that's not going to affect the quality of water in in adjacent homes and neighboring homes. Water is going to enter each home through a single dedicated pipe. It remains within your home plumbing system unless you use it and would not affect any any customers nearby. So this is something that truly could impact one house and not the neighboring house. It's that localized.
Thank you. Judy, did you have something?
Now, was this the same follow up question Greg about the lead water being able to like basically siphon backwards and go to somebody else's house?
One of the things that was pointed out to me in some of our conversations that I think the public needs to also be be aware of is that boiling your water will not get rid of the lead. That we're going to have to either filter it or treat it with chemicals one way or the other. And we'll address the filtration problem here after a while. But the public should know that even if you do boil your water, it will not get rid of the lead.
Good point, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, this is Aaron. Jim Beamer is is on the call with us. Do I have your permission to ask him to address the back?
Oh, sure. Sure, please. Yeah. Welcome, Jim.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, there's just simply there are there are backflow valves in the meter boxes. And so no one's, anyone's water goes past the meter, does not get back siphoned into the public system into another house.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? So it is an isolated issue per house.
Yeah.
Now, this is Judy. I'd like to just follow up on Jim's answer about boiling water. And as customers receive their Brita pitchers that we'll be voting on. That for everything. You know, for cooking, anything that you're going to consume. Your water needs to go through that filtration system before you use it. Cause boiling isn't going to fix it.
Boiling is good for rice and pasta, but not for lead. All right. So commissioners or anyone else that is watching, we appreciate Wendy. You, your question, hope that answered it. If if it hasn't, you could chat back in and give us another question. So commissioners, if we don't have any other questions, then we've got a couple of motions that we would make. Are there any other questions, Jim or Judy? Any other comments for our panel?
No, not this time.
All right.
I would just like to make a comment about we're not making any final decisions today because we don't have all the information. But what we are doing today is just taking steps to protect the people in that area. As we see today that we can do it reasonably. And the final decision for pump station or no pump station or changing the the makeup of a water as it goes into that will be done later on as we get information from Virginia Tech. And and the engineers that we've hired to help us decide what what best we can do.
Mr. Chairman, I think Wendy's got a follow up question.
Sure. Let me see here, Ms. Wendy. So Wendy's question is, can you, and this is for our panel, can you help me understand how the booster system will help if this is an individual home issue? That's a great question.
Be glad to take that. So the the lead and copper rule requires utilities to treat the water in a way that that minimizes the the potential for release of lead. If in homes where there may be a lead source, to minimize the potential for lead release in that area. So as we just, as we showed in the presentation, this is best described as a shared responsibility. The plumbing is is owned by each private resident. The water utility also has a responsibility with the current federal regulations to find a way to treat the water. In order to to minimize the release of lead in any homes that that could have sources of lead. You know, there, it's important to recognize there are limits to what treatment can do. And there always could still be some lead risks in homes that do contain lead plumbing. But in working with Virginia Tech, we we hope to find a treatment strategy that will reduce the potential for lead to enter the water. Even if your home could have a lead source, if it's treated perhaps in an optimal way. That could reduce the amount of lead that could end up in the water. It would stay in the pipes, not not in the water. And so so that would be the goal is to to understand if there are a number of homes in the system that that could contain lead sources. Let's treat the water in accordance with the regulations to to minimize the possibility that that lead could actually enter the water.
Roger, I have a follow up with that. So the tree for the lead will have no adverse effect on those homes that don't have lead, correct?
That is, that is correct. Yes.
So Wendy, in layman's terms, and I'm about to get out over my skis here. But Salisbury Rowan Utilities already places some, my understanding is called orthophosphates. And one of the purposes of that is it can be used as water goes through your plumbing systems. It coats the the interior of the plumbing systems and would reduce the the amount of the the effect of the lead coming out of your spigot and faucet. So it's it's a coating mechanism. The purpose for the pump station is, you know, we're pumping water a long way from Salisbury's main facility. So what the pump station would do would be, would give SRU the opportunity to treat this line specifically with, as manager Church has called it, a prescription. And the prescription would be determined by, we're trying to get help again from Virginia Tech. And Virginia Tech would help us understand what the best prescription would be to to put in that water to treat this, to minimize the the lead that's picked up in these in these pipes. Gary is, Roger, is that, how how off am I on that?
No, that that's a great explanation. That's an accurate description. Appreciate that.
Okay, so so, yeah, so Wendy wanted to know how the booster station will help and that is it. Is it's a, it really is a prescription for this northeastern water line. And it'll, it'll, it'll help us address this specifically for you. All right. Any other questions? We'll hold on here for a minute and see if any other folks that are zooming in have any other questions. Or any questions from Jim and Judy for our panel?
Actually, I have a request to our citizen Wendy. And simply to encourage your neighbors to get the tests and work with the county on making sure that their water is safe. So that is a critical issue at this point.
It's a good point, Judy. The more tests we get, the more results we get, then the more specific we can get with with the treatment that we're looking to to bring about. Roger, if there's none others, then I have two motions I'd like to make. One, to approve the contract with 120 Water. This is who is handling the distribution of the pitchers and also the testing kits. So approve contract with 120 Water not to exceed 38,000. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All right, Judy, second. Any other questions about that? All right, all in favor, say aye. Secondly, authorize staff to provide a $72 credit to water customers who participate in the lead testing program provided by 120 Water. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All right, Judy, second. Any questions? All right, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. And that's really it. Anything for the good of the cause here?
Just want to say hi to Mike and tell him to stay safe now.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Mike. Thank you, buddy. Be well. Roger and Aaron, our guests, thank you for joining us. Thank you for the work that you're doing. And I know we'll be in constant contact with you. All right, do we, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, moved.
All right, Judy, motion. Jim, second. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, thank you.